I'd like to call to order town council regular meeting, December 19th, 2024, Cape Charles Civic Center. If I could get a roll call, please.
Buckles, present.
Holloway, present.
Bennett, present.
Buda, present.
Grossman, present.
Ashworth, present.
Let it be known that we've established a quorum. If we could please rise, moment of silence, and pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thank you. So are we going four at this point? All right, sounds good. All right, so recognition this evening of our Vice Mayor, Mr. Bennett. And we have the proclamation for you this evening, sir. Proclamation 2024-1219 honoring Vice Mayor Steve Bennett for his service to the town of Cape Charles. Whereas Steve Bennett and his wife, Nan, moved to Cape Charles in 2004, when Steve accepted a position as a construction manager at the new Bay Creek Resort and Club. And whereas, as a structural engineer, Steve had a desire to learn about the infrastructure in the Cape Charles Historic District and Bay Creek. So he ran for town council in May of 2008. And whereas, Steve began his public service career with the start of his first term on the Cape Charles Town Council on July 1st, 2008. And whereas, the town council elected Steve as Vice Mayor on July 12th, 2018, and has served in this capacity for the last six years. And whereas, Steve was also appointed as the Town Council Representative on the Harbor Area Review Board in 2010, at its inception, oh, I'm sorry, 2010 at its inception, and has served continuously on this board. And whereas, during his 16-year tenure on the Cape Charles Town Council, Steve worked for the best interests of the community and Cape Charles, has undergone many changes during that time, including the resurgence of the town as an economic hub of North Hampton County. And whereas, numerous projects have come to fruition during his tenure, including revitalization of the water and wastewater infrastructure, development of the town harbor, enabling private sector economic development, development of public amenities, which include Central Park and three phases of the Community Trail, and modernization of governmental policies. And whereas, the town of Cape Charles is indebted to Steve Bennett for serving with such devotion, earning the respect, admiration, and friendship of the citizens of the community through his professional leadership and dedication. Now therefore, by virtue of the authority vested in me, Mayor of the town of Cape Charles, I, Adam Charny, in recognition of Steve Bennett's many contributions to our community and its citizens, hereby express the town's deep appreciation for his service to our community and wish him the best in his retirement. All right, moving on, public comments. Do we have anyone speaking this evening?
Kelly was trying to call me.
Okay.
Would you like to do this while I step out?
Sure. All right, first up, Mr. Herb Tom.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
And I know most of you, I wanted to thank you for the opportunity to serve on the Historic Review Board for almost eight years. I'm resigning tonight for reasons that I don't want to get into a stone-throwing contest, or word-throwing contest, or a verbal battle with the zoning administrator. So the points that I have to bring up to the town council are things that have been bothering me for a long time. One is the Coca-Cola sign that was obliterated with no recourse, as far as the Historic Review Board knows. It may have been on the town council, got some from the zoning administrator, but I wasn't aware of any of it. Number one, Fig Street. The obliteration of that building that's still in disrepair. The renovation of the new hotel where the building was supposed to add two stories, which we were told they would need 12 dedicated parking spaces. And no COA would be issued until they got that. Never heard any more about it. The other property is a problem. There's multiple problems, but these are the four that I thought would be the most relevant to look into, to see why it's going on in town. The other one is 646 Tazwell. In the book that the town council paid $40,000 for is the guidelines, not Section 8 or Volume 8 of the zoning ordinance. This is the book that I was given as chairman of the Historic Review Board to follow. And in it, it was written by professionals. And this is what we have followed, or tried to follow, in my tenure on the board. It's not being used anymore. We now use Article 8 of the zoning. Anyway, I want to thank you for allowing me to serve on the board at your permission. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Ed Wells. You want to just jump in? We'll do this and then go into that.
Good afternoon, town council members, mayor, town manager, and staff. My name's Ed Wells. I live at 202 Strawberry Street. Well, here we are again. Another vote on the STR issue in the Historic District. Town council voted for the STR zoning ordinance just four weeks ago, and it passed five to one, as stated on the front page of our local newspaper. You remember this? Four weeks ago. Front page. So why are we here tonight? Well, one member didn't realize what he was voting for. Another member said he could be persuaded to change his vote. Another member, seven years ago, thought the CUP, or Conditional Use Permit, was the way to go. Now, I presume, has changed their mind and further, in favor of the Buy Right Ordinance. Good government is accountable to the people, not special interests. And decisions should reflect the best interests of the people. The Buy Right Ordinance does not serve the best interests of the permanent residents of the Historic District. You need to find a better way. Thank you.
All right, before we go to the next one, if we can keep any boos, claps, anything else, to nothing, so we don't have to have anybody leave this evening. But I do want to change, we're not going to have anybody come up for the next reading. We're going to actually go straight into the swearing-in, if we can.
He's back.
Oh, there we go.
Yeah, you guys can go down here.
Is it doing a lot to this part?
No.
Do you, Tara S., Ashworth, Andrew J. Buckles, Great H. Newman, solemnly swear affirm that you support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge all duties imposed on you as a member of the town council for the town of Cape Charles commencing on January 1st, 2025, expiring December 31st, 2028. For the best of your abilities. All three of you, would you sign right here? And which ones do you all have? Tara? It's your pen.
Yeah.
All right, yeah. You get your staff ready to go. All right, Cynthia Emrich.
Hello, everyone, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I wrote a letter, actually, my husband and I wrote a letter ahead of your work session, to express our deep concern by how the vote went on November 21st, requiring CUPs for all new STRs, when that had not been part of the discussions in preceding months, and it had not been part of the documents that were made available for public review. And so we were incredibly heartened by your discussion and by your informal vote on December night. You know, if we want to speak about the will of the voting residents of this town, you know, we have two striking examples. In our most recent town survey, which was roughly a year ago, and which I understand had among the highest participation rates of any town survey in recent memory, 50% of our residents, our eligible voting residents, indicated that they do not want caps on STRs. 10% were indifferent, 40%, a clear minority, if only our U.S. presidential elections were this clear-cut, want caps on STRs, which I believe a CUP on new STRs would effectively constitute. The second data point I would offer up regarding the will of the people is our most recent town council election. Eight people raised their hands to take up a role on the town council. The three candidates who were most outspoken in their support for STRs were elected. It wasn't even close. I think the people have spoken. And Town Manager Hosee, I so appreciated what you injected into the conversation on December 9th. You said a conditional use permit. Well, what are the criteria? What are the criteria? I do not want further division with the criterion, and perhaps only one, is how much opposition the limit STRs contingent can muster. That's just going to foment division. It's going to be subjective. You know, the only criterion I could think of are individuals who have made a contribution to the historic fabric of our town by, you know, either rehabilitating a structure, significant rehabilitation in the past, or they're in the process, like Ms. Roxy's house, or they are contemplating that. To me, that would be a fair criterion. I can't think of any additional ones. Thank you.
Mr. John Coker.
Good afternoon, and I'm not talking about STRs. But I'm dealing with it on the county side, so I empathize with all of you. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, town council members, Mr. Hosee, Libby. Always a pleasure. I'm here tonight to talk about the possibility of a new Cape Charles town speed limit of 25 miles an hour. Okay, and some of you may know where this is coming from, some of you may not, but clearly, I've gotten calls, it's been a big issue, and so that's why I'm here. Been contacted by a lot of citizens, and they've asked me, would you support this at the county level? And frankly, if this board and this council, okay, passes a resolution basically supporting it, I will support it, and I'm sure I can get the county to support it. This isn't something that the county's going to disagree with. I actually recently talked to a VDOT friend of mine, okay? And the strategy of having a town speed limit of 20, 25 seems to be a strong position for the town. Okay, it's not just something that, you know, gee, you want this or you want that. It would be a strong position to say, we want every road in this town to be 25 miles an hour. And oh, by the way, we're only talking about one full road, that's Cassatt Parkway, and a piece of, actually, there are two little pieces of old Cape Charles Road. That's all there is. Everything else is 25 miles an hour. So having a small piece of the town, 25 miles an hour, already is confusing for the citizens. Okay, I mean, I talk to citizens, and they don't know where it's 25 and where it's not. And I can't even believe how confusing it must be for visitors. Okay, and by the way, after all, this is a successful tourism destination town in Virginia. So let's remember that, okay? It's not just us people here, citizens, okay? But it's also lots of visitors that come in every year, trying to figure out where it is 25 and where it's not. And all the things that go along with it being 25 or not being 25. And I haven't got out my calculator yet, but it's a very small distance of road you're talking about, okay? We're changing from 25 to 35, and it's just, there's no way it's going to meaningfully affect somebody's time to get somewhere, okay? I mean, we're talking seconds, we're not talking minutes, okay? I mean, literally, we're talking seconds. So I would recommend, okay, that you requested VDOT allow the town to place a town speed limit sign coming into the town on all three places where you come into the town, okay? So everybody, it's really clear, okay, that the speed limit in Cape Charles is 25 miles an hour. It's a speed limit, that's the speed limit for the town. This would make it very clear to you that if you, you, the town, wants a speed limit of 25 miles an hour. It'll also support the case that you're very serious about slow traffic for safety in your awesome little town, okay? So you want to make it clear that, again, ask VDOT, can we put up these signs? They'll get it, okay, that you want 25 in the town everywhere, okay? And maybe not now, don't confuse this issue, but later, you might want to put up speed limits, signs going out of the town, big signs going the other direction, no golf carts pass this point, they are illegal, okay? I would suggest that sooner than later, but I think I'd get this first one out of the way, and then maybe follow it up with the next one, okay? And so as soon as the town passes a resolution to this effect, I'll be glad to carry it to the Board of Supervisors. And like I say, I'm sure they'll vote for it, okay? I can't promise that, but I'm pretty sure they will. And if there's any way I can help in the meantime, I'd be glad to do that. And Libby, you can have this copy, so you can pass around. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next on the list, is it Jim Salmon? Okay. Mayor Smitty Dyer.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, miss y'all, Libby and John, good to see y'all. I'm here to speak a little bit tonight about our Vice Mayor. It's his last time sitting in this seat. He was elected in 2010 or 2008 when we started. He was on the Harbor Area Review Board, and of course, everybody knows I was Harbor Master. And so we got to spend a little bit of time together before I was actually elected mayor. And I want to say, if you look out over the harbor, you need to think of Steve. You look over at the Yacht Center, Steve was a big push by getting that there. The harbor, the slips, the docks, Steve stood behind everything that took place in that harbor. And it was a big, it meant a lot to me. I know, I'll get closer. That's all, I'm just not close enough, sorry. But I got elected mayor, and I don't know, I actually nominated Steve to be the Vice Mayor, and the council graciously went forward with that nomination. And at the time, I didn't really know how close me and Steve would become, and how much I would actually lean on Steve as Vice Mayor. And I don't think I really actually realized how much I leaned on Steve until my last day sitting in Mayor Charny's seat, and reflecting back on the time. But every time I picked up the phone, and we had some situations while I was mayor, we won't match a COVID, but, uh... Steve, you have been a huge asset to the town. And for you all just got sworn in today, you might want to go back and look at some of the film. And Steve is a man of a few words, but when he spoke, he had the attention of everybody on this council, you did. And everything you spoke was well-respected. And thank you from the bottom of my heart for everything you did when I was mayor, and I mean that, so thank you very much.
All right, and Joe Natale.
Good evening, Mayor, town council people, town manager, Libby, and the citizens here tonight. My name is Joan Natale, and as Melvin Dudley would like to say, I live and reside at 110 Blue Heaven Road in Cape Charles, Virginia. And I am also an owner of other properties within the town limits, just so you know. I am here to make a request of the town council and the mayor. I am asking that you pass a resolution, preferably at the January council meeting, requesting VDOT, number one, make the speed limit 25 miles per hour within the entire town, and number two, at some point thereafter, place signs at the point where the town line meets the county line exiting the town of Cape Charles, indicating that golf carts are not permitted on roads outside the town limits. I also request that the town pay VDOT for the cost of those signs, because I understand that's a requirement. As you may recall, two portions of old Cape Charles Road and all of Cassatt Parkway are now 35 miles per hour. The town is promoted as golf cart friendly, yet not all the roads in the town are golf cart friendly or legal. Cape Charles, Virginia's Cape website states in part, "Golf carts may be the preferred mode of transportation in Cape Charles." We are a tourist destination. It is unsafe and confusing for both locals and visitors driving golf carts to make a distinction on which town roads golf carts can be driven legally. We already have golf carts being driven into the town from outside our town limits, a risky and very unsafe practice. And we have golf carts being driven out of town on state roads, also very risky and definitely unsafe. As Supervisor John Coker stated earlier, he would support the town if the town passed a resolution requesting VDOT make the town wide 25 mile per hour speed limit. I urge you to consider this request seriously. Thank you very much for your time.
I'm going to get shot. I'm here to ask you to postpone your vote on rezoning. Every single property owner except Two Farms, Inc., which owns Mason Avenue and the Yacht Center, is here tonight. It's a really great change. Not once has the town said, why don't we get all the Harbor property owners together and talk to them together? Not once. So I'm asking you just to postpone this. Let the new council get settled in, and why don't you just once ask us all to sit together? Our family bought our property in 2007 or 2008. And back then, Mr. Panic, who was a planner and sometimes town council, he knew that Harbor District had some problems. And since 2007, 2008, we've been going to fix them. Since then, not one time has a manager or a planner sat down with us and said, how can we help? I think that's arrogant. I don't think it's fair. And it's unfair to the incoming people to have to fix that. So I'm going to ask you tonight, just wait a minute. Sit down with the concrete people, sit down with Mr. Gunn, sit down with the people who have our land under contract, and we still have a little bit left. Sit down with Two Farms. Mason Avenue is like Hollywood and Vine. And the people at Two Farms have said, they've never had a call. I asked you to wait at the last planning commission, and after I left, Ms. Nunez said, well, we've talked to those people. After I left, she said that. But what she said to Neville Reynolds, our engineer, a month before that meeting, is totally different. Why can't you talk with the property owners who are trying to create the jobs and make a plan? That's all I'm asking you to do. So before you write something down or vote on something about something you don't even know about, just consider that. Consider what it's going to do to the railroad property. Let's get some information together, that's all, that's it. Thanks.
Do you have any write-ins, Liz?
Yes. Okay, the first one is from Kathy Frost at 610 Washington Avenue. She said, "I'm hearing a lot of chatter about the desire of a small but quiet loud group that there should be harsher restrictions on vacation rentals. We would like it known that we do not share in these views. We came to Cape Charles 22 years ago, and it was a vastly different place than it is today, and not in a good way. It had fallen into hard times, and I recall part of your yard work included picking up crack bags from our street. We have lived on Washington now for four years and have vacation rentals on either side of us. Week after week, young families appear, and in all that time, they've been nothing but kind, friendly, and respectful. I honestly don't understand all this to do. I much prefer the town as it is today to the tumbleweeds and vacant homes and businesses of decades ago. I assume those complaining weren't here for those times. I completely understand that restrictions on things like parking would be maybe looked into, but to impose restrictions that would make it so much harder for homeowners to use their properties for rentals is a bit like killing the golden goose. The businesses, restaurants of our little town thrive on the 12 weeks of summer, and we full-timers benefit having them do well, because some of us remember when they simply weren't there. By virtue of geography, Cape Charles will never be a Virginia beach, that's a fact. Much of our economy is driven by tourism. Why in the world would you consider making the town less attractive to folks looking for a quaint place to someday retire, and in the meantime, pay the mortgage by renting? I personally know quite a few owners who are doing just that. Most of us welcome our visitors and feel we are in a good place and would very much like it to remain that way." This next one is from Walter Bronson at 515 Tazwell. "Mayor and council, I will be out of town and unable to attend the council meeting on December 19th, and I'm therefore forwarding this letter instead. I was dismayed to learn that council was considering reversing its vote to require new STRs to obtain a conditional use permit at the last council work session. When the new STR regulations were finally put into place and the CUP included, it felt as though council was finally hearing the concerns of the residents of the Historic District, even if it did not go as far as many of us wish you had." even if it did not go as far as many of us wish you had. To quickly discuss undoing those regulations is a real slap in the face to your constituents. The town has allowed SDRs to illegally proliferate for many years while doing nothing to regulate or control them. Your action to legalize them and put in place some minimal limitations was a good first step, even if it was years overdue. Some people think that SDR owners should be able to operate miniature hotels in our single-family neighborhood. They clearly have not lived next to or near an SDR with a dozen or more people crammed into it and dealt with all of the trash, noise, and parking issues that comes with it. Mrs. Ashworth has stated that she feels she moved to Mayberry, but Mayberry RFD was a show about people, Andy, Opie, Goober, Barney, and Aunt V. And yes, Cape Charles is a lot like Mayberry with lots of good people. Yet I fear that Mrs. Ashworth's vision for Cape Charles will turn it into something more like The Love Boat or Fantasy Island with a couple of main characters, but most of the cast changing every week. We all love Cape Charles, but many of us do not love where it is headed. We want to continue to live in Mayberry, not on Fantasy Island. People visit Cape Charles for the friendliness and quaintness of our small town. When every other house on the street is an SDR that friendliness and quaintness lose much of their shine, do you think visitors will still want to come here when it gets to that point? There is a big difference in having a small town that welcomes visitors and a tourist resort. Cape Charles is a wonderful and successful place as the former. It would be less inviting and ultimately a failure as the latter. Please keep the occupancy limits and the CUP process in place. The CUP will allow the planning commission and council to hear from the public about potential problems with an application. It will allow the council to add conditions to the CUP when they become apparent. You may even wish to add a parking condition at some point in the future. And if a year goes by and you see no benefit of the CUP process, then discontinue it then. It will be all but impossible to instate a CUP in the future. Now, at the beginning, when you have first made illegal SDRs legitimate, is the time to install the CUP as you have already done. Keep it in place. I wish you all a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. This is from Julie Jones at five thirty-eight Monroe. In Matthew seven twelve, Jesus said, so in everything do, do to others what you would have them do to you, for this sums up the law and the prophets. This is universally known as the Golden Rule and sets a standard of ethics that is recognized worldwide. Treat others the way that you want them to treat you. As you ponder your vote on regulations for short-term rentals, I would like to reference the online map of short-term rental units published in the Cape Charles Mirror on November twenty-fourth, current as of October fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, as provided by town staff. Looking at this map, it confirmed for me that the five hundred block of Monroe Avenue where my husband Sam and I live has twelve short-term rentals, the most of any block in the Cape Charles Historic District. Using the same map as a reference, it appears that the majority of the Town Council members, including the mayor, have no short-term rentals in the block where they live, or at most only one or two. I assume that this disparity exists because those, these council members are protected by covenants or an HOA that prevents short-term rentals in their neighborhoods. In the historic district of Cape Charles, we are not afforded the luxury of an HOA. The only protection that we have is you, our Town Council, elected to protect our sense of community, safety, and quality of life. Designating short-term rentals as by right does nothing to protect us. Establishing a continuing, a continual, conditional use permit might slow the proliferation of short-term rentals, but ultimately does nothing to protect us from being overrun by short-term rentals. On November second, twenty twenty-three, after months of meetings, to come up with a compromise to the short-term rental problem, the Town Managers Designated Committee proposed, among other things, placing a limit on the number of short-term rentals allowed in the historic district. Of everything that has been discussed, placing limits on the number of short-term rental units in the historic district is the only option that provides a compromise between those who want unlimited proliferation of short-term rentals and those who prefer the quality of life resulting from placing a limit on how many short-term rentals may exist in the historic district of Cape Charles overall or by individual blocks. Councilmen Buda and Mayor Charney have been transparent in acknowledging that they derive income either from owning or managing one or more short-term rentals. Before you cast your vote on whatever short-term rental ordinances are ultimately proposed, I would ask you all to be transparent and acknowledge how many short-term rentals exist in the block where you live. If you approve the by right option or the conditional use permit option, you are saying that you are okay with the five hundred block of Monroe Avenue having twelve short-term rentals, and you are okay if that number increases to fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, twenty-nine, which would be every house in our block. Search your hearts. In the spirit of maintaining a sense of community in the historic district of Cape Charles, remember the value of the Golden Rule. Thank you for your service to this little town.
Need some water?
Okay, this next one is from Jim Metz and Suzanne Hallberg at two Randolph Avenue. The most consequential decision the Town Council has had to make is determining how short-term rentals should be regulated in order to comply with the intent of the R-one residential zoning district designation. The decision demanded a process by which a compromise could be reached that would meet some, though not all, of the competing interests of three groups of stakeholders in the historic district. Those three groups are SDR investors, along with their operators and realtors, Mason Avenue merchants, and full-time residents. Three miscalculations have presented a compromise from being reached. One, despite warnings from different Town Managers going back to at least twenty seventeen, Town Council ignored the impact that SDRs would have on the historic district's residential neighborhoods. Two, recognizing the need to bring together representatives from the three groups of stakeholders, John Hosey created an ann-hoc committee on SDRs, but he underestimated the complexity of the issue and failed to gain the support of Town Council in his effort to find a compromise. And finally, three, except for one Town Hall on April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four, the Cape Charles community at large was never brought together to hear each group's concerns and to discuss possible compromises. There was never a Town Hall to discuss the compromise that the ann-hoc committee proposed. Because of these miscalculations, the decision-making process turned into a zero-sum contest, where those who profit from tourism win, and those in the historic district who don't, don't. The lessons learned are these. One, don't leave it to the market to dictate zoning solutions. Town Council's role as the governing body is to anticipate the consequences of economic forces and to manage them for the benefit of the entire community. Two, recognize when the complexity of an issue requires the objectivity and experience of outside experts. Three, don't let issues become contests among interest groups. Encourage stakeholders to talk to one another. How different things might have been had John Hosey been able to carry out his idea to organize quarterly meetings among representatives from the various nonprofit community groups. This one is from Elise McMath, three oh four Tazwell Avenue. My family has been paying property taxes on our house since nineteen oh nine. I strongly oppose your plan to rescind the recent November vote that grandfathered in existing short-term rentals while requiring new ones to go through the conditional use permit process. The November vote accepted this current SDR density as it stands while ensuring new SDRs would be evaluated by the planning commission for their impact on our residential neighborhood, as is required for any other commercial entity seeking to conduct business in the residential R-one zone of the historic district. Now, under pressure from private interests like realtors, mortgage brokers, and property investors, you are planning to reverse a policy led by full-time residents of the historic district. These private interests oppose the CUP process, namely because it allows residents a say in shaping their community through a public hearing, as if that's something to be avoided. It should be noted that the CUP is a standard process for any commercial enterprise seeking to conduct business in a residential area, including bed and breakfasts, which are similar to SDRs. The main difference is that B and Bs require onsite management. Given this, SDRs should be held to the same regulatory standards. Instead, SDR owners and their beneficiaries seek special treatment to bypass the process. Allowing SDRs by right would undermine residential zoning laws designed to protect neighborhoods, all while exacerbating the shortage of long-term rentals for locals. This is especially ironic, given the town's twenty twenty-four strategic goal to advance a variety of housing options for younger families and workforce. Allowing SDRs by right reduces available housing stock by decreasing supply, increasing demand, and raising rents. The Town Council's inability to prioritize policies that encourage full-time residency is pushing longtime locals out of the historic district and into Tower Hill, Sheridan, and Capeville. This council needs to engage with residents before making decisions on our behalf. Town halls are not just for you to hear from us, they are for us, for us to hear from each other, which is essential to bridge the divide between parties whose interests are at odds with one another. I urge you to think through the long-term effects of tonight's plan. The needs of longtime residents whose families have invested in this town for generations must come before the interests of those seeking to profit at the community's expense. If not, the ramifications of this decision risks creating an increasingly unwelcoming environment for our visitors, which no one wants. This one is from Susan Berger at five fifty Madison. WTF, why the total about-face from your decisions just a few weeks ago for CUP or SDRs? Who has that much influence on you to make this change? You have heard a million times all the reasons why so many people want some limits of SDRs and conditional use is a way to have control over a situation that is incredibly out of control. No one is suggesting we shut down SDRs that already exist. The fact is that an SDR is a business in a residence. Any improvements inside and out and extra purchases like golf carts and sand toys and floats are all tax deductions for the SDR owner. It is a business, and as such, the people who live permanently next to a business in a residential district should have a say about whether, whether that should be. I write now to ask you to do something good for full-time residents, especially those in the historic district who have no one but you to look out for their best interests and requests. If you don't do something good for full-time residents, you won't have many left to worry about, because you know that folks are leaving the historic district, because they see that nothing being done by the council is good for full-time residents. You may argue that promoting businesses, SDRs, is good for residents because it boosts the economy. I agree, there is much to like about our town's commercial district, harbor and beach, but the number of homes empty all winter long doesn't benefit commercial establishments and limits options for full-time residents so that there is little to do and spend our money on. Do something good for full-time residents. Control SDRs so we feel at home in our own home, and we feel connected to the community that includes people we know all year round. Do something good for the full-time residents. This is from Richard Berger at five fifty Madison. While one must recognize that short-term rentals and tourism have clearly become the economic engine of our town, one must also acknowledge the effect that short-term rentals are having on our population. Permanent residents are leaving Cape Charles. Whether their reason is because of the weekly influx of unknown neighbors all summer long, the fifty percent plus rise in taxes levied on ridiculously overvalued real estate, parking problems, noise issues, sixty-minute waits at a favorite restaurant from May to September, permanent residents are leaving Cape Charles. Considering, consider the ongoing vacancies on numerous town committees, why can't they be quickly filled? I would suggest that's because we have already lost a core group of residents willing to be involved in town governments. Permanent residents are leaving Cape Charles. Tower Hill, Kings Creek, anyone? With an unfettered by right opportunity to convert even more of our limited housing stock, particularly in the historic district, into SDRs, the exodus will continue. Young families already cannot afford to live here. Longtime older residents cannot afford the sharp rise in taxes. We have already become a winter town populated for the most part by relatively affluent come-hers. When do we reach a tipping point where we cannot fill town committee vacancies to conduct town business at all? Permanent residents are leaving Cape Charles. We already have difficulty finding volunteers for festive Fridays, the Love Run, Central Park activities, and again, various town boards and committees. We have already seen restaurants and retail businesses close down for weeks or months during the winter. When do we reach a tipping point where they begin to close all winter? When do we reach a tipping point where you find yourselves presiding over a virtual ghost town from October to March? I ask that you reaffirm your vote from two weeks ago and ensure that additional short-term rentals only approved by a conditional use process before all of the permanent residents have left Cape Charles. From Paul Chandler at two oh four Bay. My name is Paul Chandler, and my wife Kim and I have owned our home at two oh four Bay Avenue since two thousand ten and operated as an SDR since two thousand eleven. I wish to express my concern regarding the lack of transparency around the SDR ordinance process and the complete failure to clearly communicate the process to town residents. SDR-related meeting minutes where they exist are confusing and often contradictory. I have yet to meet a town resident who understands where the process stands, its implications, and its timing. As responsible SDR owners, Kim and I decided to limit the number of guests staying in our home to twelve. We could comfortably host up to twenty if we choose to. We closely vet every inquiry to ensure we know the exact makeup of each group that stays. We prohibit anyone under twenty-five from booking and only accept bookings from guests with a history of five-star reviews. We also have copious off-street parking available for our guests. Unfortunately, many SDR owners in town have not adopted this approach. Their focus is on maximizing profits by cramming as many people into a property as possible, with no regard for the consequences of the strategy on their neighbors. Mr. Hosey's work group has made no attempt to consider common sense measures to control the major issues related to inconsiderate SDR owner behavior, most notably parking and noise. The opportunity has been missed to present a comprehensive set of measures that cover these key issues. What we are left with after two years of talk is a pitifully inadequate occupancy ordinance that will be impossible to enforce. There has also been no consideration of the fact that SDR owners have already signed contracts with their guests for twenty twenty-five with no SDR restrictions in place. The town cannot now pass an ordinance that will materially, materially affect SDR owners' contracts with those guests, such as restricting occupancy. This will result in massive legal implications for the town. So here we are, observing an outgoing Town Council trying to push through measures that nobody understands, which benefit no one, which are unenforceable in twenty twenty-five, and most importantly, do nothing to address the underlying issues driven by SDR owner greed. My recommendation is that we all take a step back and allow the incoming council members to bring fresh ideas to the table. We should also allow a new Town Manager to bring a new perspective to the negotiating table. We must develop a comprehensive plan and have robust discussions with all stakeholders regarding all the options available to us, including the implementation of conditional use permits, of which I am a strong proponent. As an outgoing council, you have the responsibility to pass the baton to others to build out a workable solution that encourages responsible SDR ownership and shows greater compassion for the lives of full-time town residents. This is from Karen and Rick Lowe, says we are Karen and Rick Lowe. This is from Karen and Rick Lowe, says we are Karen and Rick Lowe, owners of one oh one Tazwell Avenue, our part-time residents. Our home has also been used as short-term rental since we purchased it in twenty thirteen. Please share our thoughts with the Town Council, because we are unable to make the meeting tonight. We sincerely appreciate the work that they're doing and the time spent on this very important issue. We feel that SDRs should be a by right use in the historic district. We believe that the larger issue the town must face, which causes the greatest hardship to the full-time residents, is parking. SDRs do generate quite a few cars, but so do the cars from the Kings Creek, Tower Hill, and Bay Creek residents who come to town to shop, eat, and enjoy the beach. As we read in many publications, Cape Charles is lauded as a marvelous public beach which brings in many more cars. The town's efforts at regulating SDRs is a necessary and important effort in regards to licensing, safety inspections, tax collection, et cetera. But it will not solve the parking problem. Perhaps this fee issue might merit an outside professional consultant. Thank you for your time and your consideration of our opinions. Last one, from Jim Ranger.
Jefferson.
Four hundred one. I believe SDRs should be required to go through a conditional use permit application, and I am dismayed if you are parent about face by many Town Council members at the SDR workshop. To be on the front page of the Eastern Shore Post, supporting CUP one week with a strong majority and the next week reversing that majority can only be due to one thing, influence of special interest groups. I dearly hope I'm wrong. Let me first say that I'm not against SDRs, but I think we need limits that account for the needs of full-time residents. I know a lot of SDR owners who are wonderful people and care a lot for the town. I have a bowl filled with keys for SDRs that are professionally managed, but their owners have asked us to keep an eye on them. About ninety-eight percent of the renters I meet are wonderful people who love the town like I do. The other two percent, well, that's where Toron comes on, and yes, I know the same applies to full-time residents as well. Unconstrained, SDRs are a steadily growing cancer that is killing our town and the county. It has already killed our community with so many full-time residents of the historic district moving to Kings Creek Landing, Tower Hill, or outer area altogether. The historic district is a ghost town in the off-season. Our town events are almost exclusively focused on attracting people from outside the county, while organizations like Main Street type try to get the few remaining locals to volunteer to support events which aren't intended for them. Yes, our property taxes have skyrocketed. That does nothing for us until we sell. In the meantime, our taxes have skyrocketed as well, and those won't go down. The county has to pay for an approximate eighty-five million dollar school renovation, and the money in the county is mainly in Cape Charles and a few other in the county is mainly in Cape Charles and a few other spots. Unconstrained, STRs have made housing unaffordable and driven families away, many who have been forced to leave the county. With the number of students declining, the state doesn't provide as much funding, so we make that up in more taxes. The minimal STR occupancy restrictions that seem to have been agreed upon are like trying to put out a wildfire with an eyedropper. Having admired the problem for so long, we can't put the toothpaste back into the tube. I am very certain, however, the economists are going to do that, and it's already starting, whether we want to believe it or not. Let me explain. Many STR owners bought their STRs within the last three to four years at the top of the market, the glory days when renters and buyers were knocking on doors and offering any price to get people to sell. At the top of the market, with realistically a two-month rental season, mid-June, mid-August, they have to charge a premium price to make their finances work. Most families can't afford these prices, so multiple families have to join together to afford it. That's how we get 16 people crammed into a typical three-bedroom, one-and-a-half-bed STR. Those multiple families bring multiple vehicles, multiple boats, and rent multiple golf carts. That's where the parking problem starts. By the way, renters don't like parking two blocks from their STR either. So our renters are paying premium rates crammed into a small STR, and what do they get for it? The beaches nice when they can get there after fighting through the traffic. By the way, the former community members who moved to Kings Creek and Tower Hill, they'll be driving back into town, further exacerbating the parking issues. They can go out to dinner, but waiting three hours because the restaurant doesn't have sufficient staff is not a great experience. Why don't they have staff? The STRs kill the affordable housing, and the families that may have worked in our local businesses have left. I've heard discussions about getting foreigners on J-1 visas, where are they going to live? Back to our renters. If they're paying premium prices, they want premium amenities like Ocean City, Virginia Beach, and OBX, and that's not what Cape Charles is about. I'm not saying that's every renter, but I've heard it from some, and it sounds logical to me. I don't have the biggest...
Fire!
I know, I love doing that.
Fire!
All right. So moving on to number six. Can I get a motion for the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion that we adopt the consent agenda, which includes the format, approval of meeting minutes, and the October financial report.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. No one finished business? On to new business, reapportment of the Wetlands Board member.
So, Mr. Mayor, Robinson's term has expired at the end of November. He's graciously offered to continue serving. We would love to have him continue to serve, so we would like to recommend that you reappoint him.
Make a motion to reappoint Mr. William Robinson to Wetlands and Coastal Dune Board for another term. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. On to B, adoption of updated zoning ordinance and amended zoning map.
The big one.
Yeah.
Okay. So, just as a recap, Mr. Mayor, we discussed this at the work session on the ninth, but there's a lot here. This is the entire update for the zoning ordinances that we've been working on for two years. So in order to take this in digestible chunks, we're going to break it down into what I was calling buckets at the work session, okay? There's five buckets that we're going to go through tonight. I'm just going to briefly recap what they are again. So bucket number one is the recommendations from the Planning Commission. So we're going to, so those have been provided, and we'll get to that next. So we'll discuss that. Let me back up. First, someone needs to put a motion, make a motion to put this ordinance on the floor, okay? So we need to put this on the floor with a second. Then, we'll go to bucket one. We will discuss the Planning Commission recommendations, and you can, we will take it as a whole. We're not going to go through every one of them. I requested that you review those in advance. If you have a specific question about any of those recommendations, bring it up, and we'll discuss it as long as you'd like. Hearing none, we will keep moving forward. Okay? At the end of that, we would like to make, someone make an amendment to the motion to accept the Planning Commission recommendations, vote on that, we'll move to bucket number two. Bucket number two is your recommendations. Your personal review as a council member of the entire ordinance. Anything that you've seen over the two years we've been working on this, that's your time to bring forward any recommended changes. We'll discuss those, vote on those if they come up. Once we finish with that, we'll move to bucket number three, which is a request from, developed from landowners about adding additional uses to the Harbor industrial zone. That's been provided, verbiage has been provided. If you wish to support that, we'll vote, we'll make an amendment for that and vote on that. We move to bucket number four. Bucket number four is the STR ordinance. As you may recall, the ordinance before you has a placeholder section for STRs, but you have already worked on that in advance. So what we're going to need when we get to step four is someone to make a motion to replace the placeholder STR section in the current ordinance with the version of the ordinance that has been presented in your packet tonight, okay? Once that's on the floor, we can discuss those one at a time. We will go through those changes one at a time, and you can make whatever changes or adoption you like. And then we'll adopt that as a package. And then bucket number five is the map, is the zoning map. So then we'll adopt that. When that's all done, we vote on the main motion, and then we'll be done, hopefully. So there's a lot, there's a lot to this item, and we will, so if there's any questions on the process, we can move forward to step one, bucket one. You have before you a detailed listing of all the recommendations from the Planning Commission. Many of these were considered minor typos or grammatical changes, which staff has accepted into the document. The ones in the pink color are the more substantive recommendations from the Planning Commission. So at this time, I would like to ask if any of you have any comments or questions?
We need the main motion to go on the table first.
Sorry, got ahead of myself.
I'll make the motion that we put the zoning ordinance that we had previously adopted on the table for approval.
Second. All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry.
About a while before we...
Clarification, previously adopted, you have not adopted this?
Previously presented.
As presented tonight in the packet, yes.
Just a clarification for each bucket we're going into, it's going to require...
An amendment. An amendment to the main motion, yes.
Right. So now our amended motion then would be to adopt the recommendations from the Planning Commission as shown on our table.
That would be an appropriate amendment. Second. Second. Any discussion on that?
The one thing that I would add is the Planning Commission did discuss the table 4.5 that deals with parking requirements, and they had suggested that we really need to re-review those particular aspects. Some of the parking spaces per square footage for offices or what have you have been there for a long time, and at the time, we addressed it in the Planning Commission as to, we don't have enough time to go through that and to really take that as a follow-up when we talk about parking as we go forward in council discussions.
More discussion?
I'll call for a vote.
Question, second. Any more discussion on that, phase one?
This is accepting the Planning Commission's recommendations, yes.
Accepting the Planning Commission's recommendations. All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? All right, phase one.
Okay. Okay, so this opens, this opens up to your personal review of the ordinance, and if any of you have any thoughts, comments, or amendments.
Did we go through any of the sections, or just added?
No, just...
We need a motion first for phase two, correct?
Well, no, there's nothing, there's nothing yet, so each, as each council member may have an idea, that will require a motion.
All right, I have, I have two, so let's stick with the first one, 3.10, Harbor Light Industrial. There's some verbiage, there's some verbiage that's been put in there basically from Harbor Light, Harbor Commercial, which is the railroad property, which is really CR.
It's coming down. It's coming down to you.
He's going to give you the exact language.
So, the statement of intent, A, is, it's not right, because what's been put in there is a public strong recreational value and a public gathering place.
Can I interrupt for a second? Have we resolved the microphone issue? I'm getting a lot of comments.
No, I just turned it back up because you all had me turn it down earlier. I just turned it back up to where it was, and hopefully that helps.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah, I'm just asking.
All right, so there's, you know, they're trying to, it's basically copy and paste it from the top, and it wasn't deleted, so, but I guess the Planning Commission wanted to keep it in there for whatever reason, I don't know. So the yellow line basically is, I want to remove basically the word "both" a strong economic benefit, because it's singular, because it's industrial. And then from "and" a strong public recreation all the way down to Cape Charles, the whole second paragraph gets taken out. So basically, really what the intent should be is a working waterfront area with a strong economic benefit to the town with compatible new industries, employment, uses, and to permit certain industries which do not in any way detract from the residential disparity or will not be permitted to locate in any area adjacent to the residential areas. Limitations on previous relating to height of buildings, flammable liquids, or explosives, controlling emissions, odors or noises, landscaping, or imposed to protect and foster adjacent desirable permitting industry to locate near the labor supply, near the existing available transportation, including harbor access. That's really what the intent should be.
So is that, that's your motion?
That's my motion.
Now we need a second.
I'll second that.
So I guess I have a question with, if by recreational value we're talking about people coming in with recreational boating...
Yeah, why would you take them over to industrial? We're talking on the, on the south side of the harbor. I'm not going to take a jet ski over there while there are rocks on there, and one falls over and crushes them, so there's no reason for recreational to be there. That's industrial on that side.
There are docks over there, though.
Yeah, so, but they're not, they're not, that's a loading, offloading dock, the ones directly across from, let's say, the D-dock. So there's no reason for any, any of this recreational stuff to be in this part of light industrial. You have that on the other side of the harbor.
If I may, I would like to speak in favor of the motion. I, too, think this dilutes the purpose of the industrial zone. By creating recreational spaces, if they were to be developed, that could then be used against the development of the industrial purpose that you're trying to create. We have such limited opportunity to diversify our economy, and that's the one area that we've reserved for that. So I, this language is, does, is retained in the Harbor Commercial area, so that we can still do that on the north side and the east side, but to the south side where it's, where we have light industrial, we preserve that for that purpose.
The entire south side you're talking about?
Well, wherever it's light industrial, this is specific to the light industrial, yeah.
Which encompasses over to where the old, where they were going to put the lift, all the way down to coastal precast.
Okay, so it's there west, not there east.
Yeah, yeah, because you've got, you've already got the Cape Charles yacht center over there.
Not changing that.
No.
Call for the question?
Any more discussion on that? All right, having a motion, second. All in favor of making these amendments?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? That motion carries.
All right, the second one I have relates to what we discussed, not in the zoning package, but for the B&amp;Bs, I want to change or add number five to 4.1, let me pass this out, so you guys can see it. 4.2 for bed and breakfasts is providing the following requirements. One, one through four are in there, but, you know, with, with some of the B&amp;Bs, what they wanted to do, you know, they wanted to change over to commercial, so I, I thought it was a better idea to put it back into a conditional use. Not everything that was discussed prior, but the following ancillary or accessory businesses are permissible through a conditional use permit. Said uses may include with the initial conditional use permit, i.e. the four above it, which are already part of the zoning. Permit application for B&amp;B or, or may or be applied to the modification to the approved conditional use permit. So in other words, they'll still have to file for the next three, A, B, and C, which is bicycle rentals, gift shops located within the primary residence or building identified as part of the B&amp;B, not to exceed 20 percent of the total floor space of the B&amp;B, and electric charging stations.
So that's your motion?
That's my motion.
I'll second that.
I'm recusing myself from this discussion.
Okay.
Since I own a bed and breakfast, I suppose to say that.
The other bed and breakfast.
The other one, yes.
And just, just to be clear for the public, this would only affect bed and breakfasts in the R1 district?
Right.
Is there any other discussions?
I just need help understanding, they would need to apply for an additional CUP to become a bike rental, a gift shop, or have an electric?
Well, they're going to, yeah, imply...
Their original.
Correct, to add to their original.
They're going to apply, they would have to apply for a modification of their existing conditional use permit. So yes, they would have to go through the process to modify their cup, but this being authorized, it would likely be approved.
So any future B&amp;Bs, that would be part of the whole package? Because this is not in the current cup.
Right.
All right, anybody else? Make a motion and second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Does anybody else have any other amendments on the, on the larger zoning ordinance?
Phase two.
All right, hearing none, we'll move to bucket three.
All right, I'll make a motion to amend our base motion for section 3.10 Harbor Light Industrial to include two new items there: port facilities and bulk handling and storage of materials such as stone, sand, timber, steel, et cetera, and the second item being manufacturer and repair vessels such as concrete floating docks, lodges, and ships.
Second.
These appear to be consistent with the purpose of the zone, so staff would recommend approval.
Proper motion and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Number four.
The big one.
Bucket four.
I would request someone make a motion to replace the short-term rental placeholder section of the existing ordinance with the version that was in your packet tonight.
May I say that we accept this new amended ordinance in lieu of the one that was approved on the 21st of November?
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, discussion.
All right, so let me, let me explain then what we have before you. Following the work session on the, on the ninth, we tried to capture what we felt were the changes. The, the changes that are, that are strike through and in red italic are the, the items which we believe... there was consensus from the council to approve. There were other items that were discussed at the work session that we did not get a strong sense of commitment to or rejection of. So those were placed in here for, for your discussion purposes in gold. So we'll look at those separately. But I do want to draw your attention to when I said that red italic represents what was said in the, in the work session, that is true with, with two things that I'd like to clarify. The first one is on page four, under B2, where it talks about the, the 90 days to process an application. During the discussion at the work session, there was discussion of whether the word maximum or minimum were used and I put in here just 90 days, didn't use any adjective. So I just want to draw your attention to that. I'm making that as a request, but I just want, I want you to think I'm slipping something by you. That, that was something we added. And then the other thing that we didn't actually discuss is on page six, with regard to trash refuse requirements. Because we eliminated the, the conditional use permit which would have set the refuse requirements for something larger, we needed to put something in there in its place. So what we chose to put in there is for five or more bedrooms would be a third receptacle. So that, we didn't actually talk about that at the work session, but I put that in. So with those two, with those two clarifications, everything else should reflect what was in the work session. I will defer to your comments or amendments at this point.
Well, you wanted to talk about what the sculpting goal?
Do you want to do the goal? Okay, you want to do this for us to get this out of the way? Sure. So on page, on page four, under the, the requirements for the, the permit, under F, we had talked about providing certification that the contact information would be provided to all current adjacent property owners in that permit period. We, we were concerned at the time at the work session, well, how would we know? I think we were, what we were talking about before was that we would just do it as it changed. It occurred to us, make it simple, just do it every year and you never have to worry about it. It's just simple. So, so it was, it was, it was attempted to address some of the concerns by going away from the conditional use permit to at least make sure that adjacent property owners always have the current contact information. We just make it part of the annual process like everything else. And again, this is just a certification. So like many things in here, we, we have the applicant certify that these things are gonna happen. If it's ever discovered that they falsified that certification, that's a violation and they could potentially lose their permit. So, so that was, that was the first one. Any discussion on that?
Yes. I, I have rethought my support of adding that in because I want to understand, are we asking, well, maybe this is more process-related, if the town is going to be investigating any violations, wouldn't it make more sense for issues to trickle up through the town versus a neighbor calling another neighbor to say there's a violation? A neighbor calling a short-term homeowner rent, a short-term homeowner to say there's a violation? So then that owner would have to call the town and report on themselves? That was the process I was having over time with.
If I may, because I proposed that.
Yes.
So, I think the, the purpose of that was for short-term rental owners to contact their neighbors and let them know, this is a short-term rental, here's my number, if you see some problems, let me know. As we have disclosed before, I do own a short-term rental, we do let our neighbors know that and at times, our neighbors have said, you know, you may not know this, but these people are doing this, which allows us to go over and deal with that. It wasn't in a violation, it was a, let's get this done so we're better neighbors.
It doesn't circumvent the process then, though.
Not at all.
It does, because if the violation is occurring, if it's legitimately occurring and it's not trickling up to town administration and you've now violated this three times, but your neighbor is coming to you directly, and that's why I sort of oppose this. I feel like it takes us away from being process-oriented if there are problems going on in a particular, particular home.
I, I think it fits into our good neighbor policy which the Vacation Homeowners Group started and is working. I, I under, I see where you're at, Tara, but I think that what the intention of this, and maybe the wording isn't correct, is to continue our good neighbor policy so that if, as a bed and breakfast, I provide my information to my neighbors regularly. If they have a problem, I, you know, want them to let me know. If they'd rather call the police, they can do that too, but, and then the people beside me do that as a short-term, a short-term rental owner. And therefore, I, sometimes we can avoid something to get to a violation point, like a parking issue or what have you. So I really like that as part of who we are in character. If the wording's not quite right for you, maybe we can work this. I see what you're saying, I don't think it's meant to circumvent that, it's just meant to be proactive as good neighbors.
And I think that's fine, but I don't know that the place where it then belongs in here in the ordinance because the, by putting it in the ordinance, you're saying I should, as an, as a resident that lives next to a short-term rental, be able to go and police them myself? And that's what we're trying to avoid. You can't track if issues like noise are happening repeatedly and somebody comes into John's office and says, well, noise issues have been happening repeatedly with this house. And John says, no one's called me. And they say, well, I've called the owner, but there's no tracking, nothing has been recorded, it's just, I've called the owner myself individually. Now you're sort of starting from square one. That's, that, that's my concern. I am all for being good neighbors and I think that happens organically, but I have a problem with it becoming a part of the requirements that would then allow people to police each other as neighbors.
I, I'll chime in because I don't see that. And maybe by coupling it with the contact information is what's muddying up the water. I see during the permitting cycle, certification coming that you have contacted your other neighbors. Period, that's it.
Yep.
Yes.
And maybe by making that a separate item under two...
Add it as a FG and then, you know, or keep going from there or something.
Or reggaeton J.
J.
That I would support.
Say, say that again, I'm not sure I understood.
Just give it its own note letter.
But the same words?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Certification that you, you are notifying your neighbors...
Of what?
That you're gonna have a short-term rental.
Just that it's a short-term, but not contact.
That's how I read.
But not contact information.
Just that you're a short-term rental.
Correct. Because we're already giving the information in F, that they have to give it to the town already for the 24/7.
Yeah, but that doesn't mean I...
But no, it says here, and certification that this contact information has been provided to all current adjacent property owners each permit period.
Right, right, this, this, as currently written, they would, they would have to not only let them know that it was an STR, but they would have to provide contact information.
So J, it would be J, just certify that you provide it to your neighbors.
And if you're gonna have both, you don't really need it as a separate, I mean, you can, but it mean, it doesn't change the meaning.
So to take it out, to extract that, make it its own item, J, and say letting, you know, certification that this, that all current adjacent property owners have been notified, something like that.
So omitting the contact information?
Correct.
Then it makes sense to move it to J if that's what you want to do.
Yes.
If you're gonna leave the contact information, it makes sense to leave it where it is.
All right, I like, I like that.
So, so...
Compromise one.
Just sort of fine.
That's gonna be amendment to the amendment.
Correct.
Right.
Yeah, well, we would need to do it anyway if you were gonna accept it. We would need to make, make this part of the... So, so if someone wants to make an amendment to the amendment to, to, to take that, take that out and make it a separate J, omitting the, the contact information?
I make an amendment to the amendment that we add item J to, let's see, what'll be in section four?
B2.
B2, thank you. Requiring certification that an STR owner provide, or, or just let current adjacent property owners know that it will be an STR. I was really not wordsmith that very well, but...
Your, your, your intention is, is underst...
Certain people that they've notified they're applying for STRs.
I love it.
I like that, yep.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks. Is there any other discussion on the amendment to the amendment? Without any, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, any opposed? That amendment to the amendment, that's passed.
All right, so, so now the, the, the next two are actually tied together. So there's an "I" on here, but let's put that aside for a minute because we really need to go to page five, section C4. This is the parking concept we talked about. Again, on staff, it seems like a very low, low-hanging fruit method of trying to begin addressing some of the parking concern. It, it'll, it will require us to just do a review of every application coming in to determine if off-street parking is available. If, if it is, then we'll make that a requirement of the STR. If they don't have it, no, no harm, no foul, they move, they move forward. If, if, if that's something you wanted to support, then that would need the "I" that's on over, over here. So, so we'll just focus on, we'll just focus on the parking.
Now, during our work session, we discussed this. I'm not sure we had a consensus.
No, you didn't, that's why it's in gold.
So that's what I'm saying, you know, I think we were in favor of inserting this, item four.
I am not. I conceptually agree with this. I love it as a, a process concept within the administration. That could be when someone comes to apply for a zoning permit, the conversation is had. Why don't we go and look at your property and see if you can accommodate some parking? I much prefer that, then this seems just too nebulous to me. What, what would determine, how, how do we know that there's enough space? What if somebody sees this and decides, well, I'm gonna put some shrubbery in so that you can, you can't tell me I have parking? It just, it's, it's too vague and I don't think it accomplishes what we're trying to do, which is find parking, but this doesn't do that for me.
Okay?
Well, I, I like, I like the ad. I'll, I'll put that. It promotes the discussion and it's discussed during the permit submittal.
And we talked about before, if they have something in the backyard, like they've already did landscaping and all that, they're not gonna make them pull it down.
I still think it, it doesn't have specifics tied to it. How do you, how do you determine? And now we're putting it into an ordinance and it doesn't tie any specifics down.
But it's not gonna, it's not gonna deter for them from their short-term rental.
Well, if, if somebody comes to my house and says, well, I'm sorry, that fence, those trees, they go, because you could put parking.
No, we talked about that during work session.
We can talk about all we want, but in the ordinance, it does not say that these are the requirements, these are the rules. It just says, some town staff will look at it and make a decision, take down your fence, put in a parking spot. I can't support that.
I think so. I remember now the question that I had is that the second, the third sentence, no negative consequences pursuant to this requirement shall result against an STR zoning permit application if the town determines that off-street parking is unavailable. Well, then why does it matter?
No, no, what it means is, is that if we determine that it is available, then you have to do it. If we determine it's not available, then no, no negative consequence, your, your application can move forward, there's no negative consequence.
But it can, but it can move forward anyway.
No, no, not, not if we determine that the parking was available.
No.
I think that's also putting the parking solution that needs to be much bigger on just a handful.
It's come back to me now, I remember that I recommended that that be part of our bigger parking discussion and then we add it in as needed then.
Correct.
Sorry, I couldn't recall that.
Okay. I'm sensing there's not support for this, just...
So we need to make an amendment to the amendment?
Yes, it'd be clean, it'd be nice to make an amendment and amendment to remove it.
Amendment that we delete paragraph C4 and what is currently paragraph CI and change the new J to I.
Correct.
Second. Any other discussion?
All right.
All in favor of that amended amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
You've earned your keep on that one.
16 years of experience.
Four, one against. That motion carries, we're back to, that's all.
Does anybody have any thing they want to offer?
Yes. That was the drum roll. I would like first to propose that we remove the statement in article four, section A, no, I'm so sorry, section B, number two, that we remove who shall have 90 days to act on an application. After discussion with town manager Hozie, there are no other ordinances that give a timeline to process, at least this is what you told me, and I also think that this is a very lengthy time period that would cause undue uncertainty in our short-term rental community.
Second.
All right, so, so what then is the timeline?
Well, do we have time limits for any other process?
Well, it doesn't matter, on this, what is the timeline for processing? It could sit in the office for five months.
Yeah, it, it, there's, there's, it just comes down to expectation. I mean, we have, people don't seem to understand how long it takes to do things sometimes. We've gotten requests and Jeb told me about inspection requests, you know, he can come out and inspect my house, I've got renters coming in tomorrow. And people actually think that we should be able to respond like that, you know? And so to have some sort of expectation out there that, you know, there's a process here and just so that people aren't constantly disappointed, maybe 90 days isn't the right number, but, but, you know, having something, something out there that we consistently beat means you're always making, you're always making your customer happy, not the other way around. But it, I, I'm not gonna follow my sword ordinance either way, I'm okay, we just want to remove the language.
Well, if you look at it that way, I mean, they're going through this whole process, getting all this stuff up in front to get zoning clearance to do short-term rentals, so they're gonna have to get the inspection done, they're gonna have to have all this stuff done before Katie can sign off on it. So, if it's all done and she gets it, then it's just a matter of, all right, they got everything, good, you're done.
Well, if we're not doing anything else and if we haven't had 300 others coming through at the same time.
But I thought that was one of the reasons we were supporting the additional budget information that we were provided. So personnel, software, all of those things.
Come up with a motion, yeah, that was just the informational.
Right.
Right, but if we, but still, that's informational that we're talking about. I mean, I'm agreeing to some of these things based on that we're gonna have, be able to add the staff and the software and the things needed to do that. So that was, that's kind of an assumption I'm going on as we move forward. If that's not the case, then we need to back up because we can't do any, we can't do the things we're gonna say we're gonna do.
So, again, I, no objection if you want to remove it, yeah.
I, I think having a maximum timeframe, it, like you're saying, allows some certainty that it will be done by this point. I think 90 days is a long period of time. Do you have a shorter period of time in mind?
Five days.
I would rather not have any language at all.
That's what I'm saying, I don't think we should have anything in there. That's like, my husband asked me how much he thinks about Christmas.
As I said, they've gotta go through all this legwork before it can even go to be signed off on. Once, once all that's done.
Right, exactly, so that's why I'm saying, I don't think a time limit should be in there. Jeb and Katie, I never would have suggested five days, I promise, that was a...
That was a funny.
Yes, but Katie turned this color.
Either she's laughing or crying.
But no, I don't think there should be a time limit in here and I, and I think, I think we create uncertainty by, by, especially when you consider that 90 days could be an entire short-term rental season. And I, and I think that that, it would hinder progress in that portion of our economy. So I move that we remove that statement.
I thought you did, yeah.
Yeah, you did.
And I seconded it.
Yeah, we already, we already...
I call for the question.
There you go, there you go.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Without more discussion, all in favor of the amended amendment to remove the language of 90 days, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, that amended amendment carries. Anything else?
Yes, I do have another. Under article four, section C, number six, the occupancy.
Oh, boy. My favorite.
I do have this written to pass away.
Sunday, Monday, Tuesday.
Okay, I am suggesting that we add to number six, which reads, occupancy, there shall be no more than two lodgers per bedroom plus two, with the maximum number of overnight lodgers per dwelling being no greater than 10. Occupancy shall not exceed any limit set by the Virginia Uniform Statewide Building Code or local building code official. This shall be identified as the base occupancy for STRs, which is something we've added to this, this is new. I am suggesting that we also add, for the purposes of the base occupancy for an STR, an occupant shall not include any persons two years of age or under. I think that this addresses concerns certainly that I have as a parent and an advocate of short-term rentals, that we are unduly limiting families from being able to come to Cape Charles, particularly those with infants that are not gonna be sleeping in a separate bedroom from their parents, gonna be in a pack-and-play crib, something along those lines, in the bedroom with the parents, and therefore should not count for that occupancy.
I would.
Was there, Jeb's your motion?
That's her motion.
Sorry, yes, that's my motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
So can I clarify something here? I don't have a problem with this, I think it makes sense, but I do wanna make a point that we have two different occupancies going on here, right? We have one that's the building code, that's state code, okay, we don't control that, okay? Then we have our second one, which is an STR one, which you have total control over, okay? In general, it's likely that the building code could be higher than the STR one, okay? In that situation, this could be helpful, because you would.
Right.
However, if it happened to be that the building code was, I'm gonna pick a number, was eight, and the STR, the booster, as they're calling it, if that was eight, okay, this would not apply, because you can't go over the building code.
It trumps.
As long as we understand that, okay? So it would be helpful in situations where we're less than the building code. Jeb cannot take, the code doesn't define an age, so he can't arbitrarily do that when he's looking at it from a building code perspective. So I just wanna make that, this is a nuance, I just wanna make sure you understand that.
And do you think in the second sentence, we cover that, because it says occupancy shall not exceed any limit set by?
Yes, I think that covers it.
That's really, like, clear for?
I think that's very, no, I think that's very clear, and that's why terrace amendment specifically refers to the booster.
Yep.
And so I think that's fine, I think this works. I just wanted to make that clarification, make sure you knew what you were voting on.
Great.
Any good with that?
Everybody's good with that? Any other discussion on this? All right, all in favor of the amended amendment?
Just make sure that the balance of this is in there, you can see there's two more paragraphs.
Yeah.
That stays.
Yes.
All right.
Yes, yes.
Just wanna make sure that's the case.
Good clarification.
All right, now all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Anything else? Not hearing any other?
No, we can just.
So now you would be voting on the amendment to include this in the main ordinance as you've amended tonight?
Which is already on the table and seconded.
Right.
All right, and this is a roll call vote, correct?
No.
It's just an amendment.
We're not at that one.
Okay, good to know, just saw STR, figured that was it. All right, so all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? One?
Without the conditional use permit for new STRs, I can't support.
Five ayes, one nay, motion carries. On to number.
That's bucket four. Bucket five is the zoning map. So make, a motion to accept the zoning map as presented.
We're gonna get it recolored.
Yeah, do we have them in that?
It's gonna be crammed. Is it gonna get professionally done? Okay, I'm just, it's humor.
Yeah, so it's also, it's provided here in the chart in your packet.
Did I hear a motion?
Not yet.
Not yet.
I make a motion to accept the zoning map amendments.
The chart, reference the chart.
Chart, the charter zoning map amendments.
Second discussion.
Yeah, that was a lot of work.
I'd say, just in the clarification, I think it's in the table, that one piece of property is gonna be split zoning that fronts Mason and Harbor Commercial.
That's correct, it's the Penonian Land property. We have said that the portion that's fronting around Mason Avenue.
One forty back.
Hundred and forty feet will be Harbor Commercial, all the rest of that big chunk parcel will be Harbor Light Industrial, that is listed on your chart as such.
I think you got that.
Eight nine, eight nine, I think it's something.
Thank you, I don't understand this, but I have listed that out.
Second from the bottom? No. About that one.
Third page, or whatever it is. So first chart, second from the bottom.
Thank you.
All right, any other discussion on bucket four?
Five.
I'm sorry, bucket five.
Let's not go backwards, we're going forward.
I just wanna throw out to those listening and here tonight, it may seem like, you know, we're going over a little chart, and it's just done. Countless, countless, countless work sessions led up to this magnificent chart. So there's a lot of behind-the-scenes work from staff and from both the planning commission and the town council to get to this place.
Two years to be exact.
All of it included.
And I would also add that this also then now brings our zoning ordinance in compliance with our comprehensive plan.
Yeah.
All right, so all in favor of bucket five?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, bucket five.
Now we're to the main, back to the main motion as amended.
All right. All right, so is there any other discussion on the main motion of the zoning ordinance?
It should be your ordinance.
And this is a roll call vote, right?
Yes, correct. And that's the amending of the Cape Charles zoning ordinance, all right, here we go. All right, I move for adoption of ordinance number 20241219A, amending Cape Charles zoning ordinance by replacing it wholly with zoning text amendment 2024-2 and zoning map amendments 2024-2 through 204-84. As noticed and forego reading of the ordinance, this is a roll call vote, Ashworth.
Yay.
Bennett.
This is gonna sound disingenuous, but I vote no.
Buckholz.
Yes.
Buda.
Yes.
Roseman.
Yes.
Holloway.
Yes.
All right, with a vote of five to one, that motion carries. All right. Now, on the C, the town code amendments related to short-term rentals.
So as you know, the recommendations that we talked about for STR, the vast majority that we just covered in the zoning ordinance, although there were a couple of housekeeping items that exist in the regular town code, and so we're bringing those forward here at the same time so that we can complete this package. The first deals with solid waste. We had talked about, you know, additional containers are required for additional bedrooms. There was a request that that be, there be relief from that if the STR was not functioning for an STR for greater than 90 days. So that was placed in the chapter 24 of solid waste. However, since we were going into the solid waste anyway, we took this as an opportunity to do a lot of housekeeping. So it's been a while since this ordinance has been updated, so if you'll notice as you go through it, there's a lot of changes in here, just housekeeping items mostly in process terminology, that sort of thing. We did, though, update the fine for violation from $20 to $40, last time that was last updated was in 20, 2000? 2000. So that's the main part for chapter 24. For chapter eight, building inspections, this brings into compliance all, everything we've been talking about for STR inspections. The big thing, the big change here is that for the first time, we're adding the Bay Creek PUD as included in the inspection envelope. So now we will start inspecting STRs in Bay Creek, where everything else in the zoning ordinance that you passed tonight does not apply to Bay Creek, because that's zoning. This is the regular code, the regular code applies everywhere. So now, I'll also just add, just for understanding, the PUD, the Bay Creek PUD, which is itself a zoning ordinance, is in desperate need of update, okay? And we were waiting for you to finish with this. Now that the main zoning has been updated, now we can look at the PUD and say, now what parts of this make sense for us to use? So now, starting in '25, we're gonna start working on updating the Bay Creek PUD, and at that time, you may choose to pull some of these other STR regulations in, but until you do that, they don't apply to the PUD. But the inspections will, because it's in the regular code. Then the other thing is just housekeeping items to add STRs for business license purposes. So those are the recommended changes to the regular code and recommend approval.
Make a motion for it.
So I'll make a motion that we adopt the changes as presented in our packet tonight for town code changes.
Second.
Any more discussion?
Yeah, I have two amendments. On the very first page in chapter eight, very first paragraph lists out the residential properties, and it has R1, R2, harbor, harbor needs to be harbor-commercial.
Correct.
Right, as opposed to light industrial. The other item has, is second page, third page from the ends, on collection charges, 24-47.
So you still on chapter eight?
No.
Page seven.
Yeah, I'm to now section 24, sorry. And the section 24-47, I don't see there. We had added into our short-term rental ordinance, five or more bedrooms require three receptacles. That's not reflected here. So what I would offer is to add or modify the words, notwithstanding paragraph B above, the short-term rental zoning permit holder who is required to have two or more receptacles may request removal of greater than one receptacle provided in the following sentence, you know, balance of the sentence.
Yeah, that's good.
All right.
So amend the motion for those two items.
Second.
Second. All right, any other discussion on those two amended motions? If not all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, that amended motion carries. Anything else, Tom? All right, so I move for adoption of ordinance 20241219B, revision of town code section related to short-term rentals, as noted and forego the reading of the ordinance, roll call vote, Ashworth.
Yay.
Bennett.
Yes.
Buckholz.
Yes.
Buda.
Yes.
Roseman.
Yes.
Holloway.
Yes.
With unanimous vote, that motion carries, and we are on to your comments.
So keep it short. I just would like to add, in the announcement section on your agenda, there's been an addition since we published this, so there's also a meeting, goodness gracious, there's also a meeting on January 15th, it's a work session on the beachfront master plan, so I just wanted to add that in. And then, just the last thing I want to say is I just would like to offer my sincere appreciation to Steve Bennett for all of your steadfast support, not just for me, but for the entire staff, and it's been an incredible honor working with you for the last five years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have comments, Steve?
Just, we heard two people tonight talk about 25 mile an hour, so we'll pick that up.
Before you talk, sir. When we first moved to town, and we started going to a council meeting, which was pretty much immediately, this man was at the Amadias Den, it was in the Catholic Church reception hall at the time, and they were very entertaining, I have to say. Those meetings were very entertaining, but I looked up there with respect to Steve and learned so much from him about the town by going to those meetings, and continued as they came to the civic center, and I really never thought that I'd be up sitting beside him to do that and to move forward, and it has been such a wonderful mentoring, learning opportunity. I appreciate you.
Well, I too, after eight and a half years working with Steve, actually, he's the one that recruited me to be up here, so.
So he's the blame.
He did recruit me too. I get credit for that.
I had a nice meeting at his house, and I gave him what I was all about, and I guess the rest is history, but working with Steve has been a complete pleasure. We don't always see eye to eye, but most of the time we did, and you can be sorely missed, but I know where you live.
Exactly.
So.
Hope you don't charge us a consulting fee.
He's busier now.
Will be no more than my council cell.
Plus, he's busier now than ever.
Yeah.
The mic is yours, sir.
Thank you, and I thought about all the things I could say, would say, and could keep you here all night, but, you know, since this is my last meeting, as you can imagine, after being up here for 16 years, there are dozens of things I could talk about, and some are good, some are bad, some have been brought up, like the interesting meetings we used to have in the stairs we used to get from the audience, or the jeers, or the faces. You know, I could talk about why I ran, what's transpired since then, the good things, the bad things, but in the end, I just thought I'd mention a couple of good things in our meeting, and three things jumped immediately to my mind when I thought about that. And first is, I've served at least 20 different council members over the years, and the group own this dais now, the last few years have been fantastic. They're always here, they're always prepared, and the town's lucky to have them. And second, I think our voters have chosen very well with our two new council members, and they'll be a great fit into the current council. Plus, I get the benefit of having all of this experience to help them learn as they transition into their new roles. I have any advice for them, it would be, always come to any meeting prepared and to make all your decisions with the best interest of Cape Charles in mind, which I think was mentioned in this proclamation, thank you. Third, I think the best thing that's happened to Cape Charles in my 16 years is sitting down the end of the dais here. John has done a phenomenal job of getting our town into the shape it is. When I got on campus. When I got on council, we had quite a bit of debt, very little money, aging infrastructure, and, you know, pretty much poor mouth. Everything we did, we did it as cheap as we could do it, which wasn't the right way to do it, but the way we did it. But now, 16 years later, no debt, not a penny of debt, money in the bank and a good bit of money in the bank, a great group of staff members helping us succeed. So John, thanks for all of that. Not to mention that the day after he started work, COVID hit, so he had a little bit of an uphill climb on that. So in closing, I want to thank fellow council members and our dedicated town staff. I want to call out two staff members, long-term, both of them here, Jimmy in the back, many, many years as our police chief, my friend, and Livy over there, I think was my first point of the day, constitutional officer, and couldn't have made it without. And then, most importantly, my wife, Nan, for all the evenings that she spent alone while I was here.
Having such fun.
So I appreciate the opportunity to serve the town, all of you, and wish the new council a lot of success as you move into the future.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Chocolate. Butter fingers to be exact.
Life supply and butterfinger.
Steve Bennett, in appreciation for your service to the town, Cape Charles, as councilman and vice mayor, July 1st, 2008, December 31st, 2024. That's a long time.
Thank you very much. And if there's nothing else, I'll.
Make a motion.
No, 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 I'm just going to go over some announcements.
No, I don't make the last motion.
All right, so just some quick announcements. December 24th, 25th, town offices will be closed for Christmas, and Merry Christmas to everyone. January 1st, offices close for New Year's Day. January 2nd, it'll be the Town Council Work Session, mid-year budget review. The 9th, Town Council Executive Session, interviews for Town Manager candidates. January 16th, Town Council Regular Meeting. The 20th, the offices will be closed for Martin Luther King Jr. Day. And January 30th, Town Council Public Hearing and Special Meeting, fiscal year 2025, mid-year budget.
And two things. Clayton, I have an iPad for you. Can I make a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? You are adjourned.